...to order at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Okay, great. Then we'll roll right into general business and start with our pre-K through sixth learning report.
Good evening, everyone. All right, thank you for having us. Steve Bullshire, Principal of North Street School and Elementary Curriculum Director.
And I'm Jen Bianon, Director of Curriculum and Staff Development. It's nice to see you again.
And as we put together this presentation, I first wanted to share that I had an incredible opportunity to attend a international conference representing the National Association of Elementary School Principals as one of their ambassadors, and it was a great learning experience and had an opportunity to interact with a lot of well-known researchers, most notably Doug Fisher, who's written many texts around data and professional learning communities, and really dive deep into John Hattie's new book, Visible Learning, which really looks at a lot of the key impacts of certain interventions and also strategies to professional development, classroom strategies, and what really kind of makes a difference in their meta-analysis. It's a wonderful book. If you haven't read it before, it's a big book, so you know, snuggle up and read it. But I tried to tie some of that learning and some of what Hattie talks about, and if you know Tracy Kahlo, she's probably been here before talking about John Hattie's work. But throughout the presentation today, we're trying to connect some of those key pieces that he speaks of to the work that we're doing at the elementary level. So I just wanted to start with a quick video, which can be found on the National Association of Elementary School Principal's website. Adam Welkum, who is another colleague I've interacted with quite a bit, is amazing former principal and now keynote speaker, and then John Hattie's on the right.
Our worlds are finally connecting. John, you are known all over the world for your theories around learning and student achievement. What are three things that you want to see in classrooms every day to support all kids?
He's only going to say two, but...
I want classrooms to be learning organizations, to have, to hear the thinking aloud. Like, I get criticized, Adam, because of my work's called Visible Learning, and the critics saying, "Oh, no, it's not. It's not visible. You can't see it." And that is the point. It's the exact opposite. I want that learning to be visible. Now, I also want to rush in and say, of course, learning is about something. So yes, that is critical too. But I want kids to be here thinking. Like, they're sitting there every day, listening to the teacher talking, listening to their colleague and their peer in the classroom, Adam, who's sitting there, he's getting everything right. And they're saying, "How does he do it? What's going on here?" And for many kids, they think it's something that Adam has in his genes or in his water and he puts on when he gets up in the morning. And when he asks a question, he just gets the answer straight away. But if I actually get into your brain, Adam, I expect to see a grasshopper. And that teacher asks out of the question, Adam says, "Ah," and he hops over here, and he realizes that's the wrong direction. It's not going to get him the answer. So he comes back and he hops over here, "Yeah, it's okay." He's very good at error detection. He's very good at coming up with alternative ways. And then he gets to the right answer, he gives it, and I'm sitting there saying, "How did he do that?" And so the first thing I want to see in every classroom is that thinking aloud. Teachers thinking aloud, kids thinking aloud. And when we did a study, 20,000 hours of classroom instruction, and we asked how many times in 20,000 hours across many teachers did either a teacher think aloud or did a kid think aloud or asked to think aloud? The answer was zero. It's a mystery out there for these kids. And so that, and that's the liveliness of classrooms. So when you ask the three things, that's where I start, is I want to hear that thinking. Now, it's got to be safe. I'm not going to, Adam's not going to think aloud, and I, the one that struggles in the classroom, I surely am not going to think aloud, because you'll hear all my vulnerabilities. You'll hear, how bad am I? So it has to be high trust. And we've heard for years, but the culture, from the management literature, is culture comes first. So that cultural...
So he talks about two things in that first few minutes, both of which are really important. And one is the students' thinking aloud, sharing their thinking. It's okay to make mistakes and learn from each other, and the teachers allowing that to happen, and then that piece around safety. And what that really comes down to is engagement, really, when you kind of look back and step back. So there's teachers engaging with the students, students engaging with the content, teachers engaging with the content. So as we're thinking about our professional learning, teaching and learning for pre-K six, we have to keep all of those connections in mind. Just kind of jumping off, because I'm a true believer in relationships and culture, I think that that has to be the place that you start. In Hattie's work, anything in the red area of his Visible Learning matrix really is high impact. So .62, teacher-student relationships, that's where everything starts in the classroom. Students trust that they can take chances. They trust that the teacher is leading them. So as we work with our staff, we're working on making sure that we've got those social emotional learning pieces in place. As you know, from our elementary, other elementary schools presenting this year, we are in our first step at Millbury Street and North Street implementing second step, but North and South Grafton have been doing it for a few years now, really taking a step back as we close out year one and looking at how can we improve and build on that. Just to give a snapshot, the units that each of the second steps' grade levels focus on are skills for learning, the organization, coming ready, prepared to learn, empathy, emotional management, which we know is more critical now than ever, and then that problem solving through pair interactions with each other. Our work also, as we built the report card, took the second step and what we wanted to see in the classroom and looked at the Castle Wheel. And castle.org is the foremost leader in social emotional learning out there. They have five key areas, which are self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. But that really is developed by the classroom, the school, the larger community. We're fortunate in Grafton to have a wonderful community, wonderful families. Kids come with a lot of these skills already, which we can then take and build on, which is what resulted in our habits of mind, our social emotional report cards. So you see the same five pieces of the wheel on the left. When I was here talking with Joanne Stockland in Millbury Street, we kind of, we talked about this, but I thought it was important to highlight it again, that it's a key part of our curriculum here in Grafton, to make sure that those relationships are built with the teacher, kids with their peers, so that they can learn in a collaborative environment. So all that we do is centered around making sure that cultural piece is there. Kind of next, as you think about that teacher and content, clarity is a huge impact. So when we think about how well the teachers know the content, it's important that they dive deep into it. When we implemented Envisions two years ago at the K5 level, really making sure that we unpacked the program, unpacked the curriculum in a way that teachers had time to do that and really learn the reasoning behind the math, to build their clarity so that they could then bring it to the classroom. We know that when teachers have more clarity around what they're teaching, you're likely to see more of that questioning and that guiding and letting the kids struggle at times and mess with the uncertainty of math at times, but problem solve and really make those connections. I believe Jen had recently shared this with me, and I thought it was really a good visual of, as we continue to think about professional development and as we design that here in pre-K six, there's a common belief that PD should be around, give PD to the teacher. The teacher beliefs, attitudes change, classroom practices change, and then student outcomes change. That's kind of what most think, but the actuality behind it is that there's PD, the classroom practices change, there's student outcomes, which confirm that these practices are shifting, and then the teacher beliefs and attitudes begin to shift. And I think we saw that firsthand so far, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, with our piloting of the new ELA curriculums, focused more on the science of reading. The teachers at first really, it was a very big shift in what we've done for many years at elementary schools, not just here in Grafton, but all over the country. And those first few months, learning that new curriculum, teachers really unpacked it, but then they really saw the student outcomes in the classrooms, changed their beliefs and attitudes. And now, as we'll see very end of the presentation, they want more of that PD and more of that shift, because they're seeing how much it impacts kids. And I know all the teachers here ultimately here for the kids and want to see that growth in the kids. Of course, tied to that, couldn't talk about teaching and learning and science of reading without bringing up the Scarborough's Reading Rope. Kristen Perron, Lisa Rice, if they were here, they'd be very happy to see it. But really, the ELA curriculum piece is going to tie this rope together, no pun intended. We have a great phonological awareness program, pre-K three, with our foundations, but we really need that extra piece that we've been piloting and implementing next year, which will be a very critical part of our curriculum moving forward. So where are we at with that? We piloted this year, Witten Wisdom in illustrative, I'm sorry, My View. Our teachers really found My View to not be enough of a shift to the science of reading, as I'm sure you've heard. Witten Wisdom, there's some pros and cons, and as with any program, and so we are looking at Imagine Learning, EL, as well, very similar programming to Witten Wisdom at this point. But Hattie points out that really, regardless of the program, that comprehensive reading program is really critical and has a high impact on student learning. So to me, the exciting piece is the science of reading shift, having that program to shift in that direction and start making progress towards that. And I think that, you know, we could debate pros and cons of programming in many different ways, but really, to me, it's about that shift and about just having that common programming and instructional practice. When we think about implementing programming, it's really critical that we have a shared instructional vision, because, I'm going to skip ahead really quickly to another slide right here, the most important piece that Hattie talks about in his work, the highest impact on student learning, is the teacher's collective efficacy about their impacts. Essentially, what that means is that if teachers believe that collectively they can make a difference, then the kids will learn more. They're going to, because naturally, in that environment, you're sharing more, you're collaborating more, you're looking at data more, which is leading to further impacts and changes in the classroom and in the kids' learning. So that collective teacher efficacy around that shared vision of instruction is really important, and we've done a lot of work this year that we should be proud of with our coaches and specialists, working directly with our teams during recess meetings, which basically looks like we're covering those recesses so the teachers have more time to collaborate with each other, to meet with Kristen Perron, our literacy director, to meet with Jenny DeRoz, meet with our math coaches around what they're seeing in the classroom and planning instruction. Our PD days, of course, is a great opportunity for that. At times, releasing teachers to do that work, it's really critical that, again, they have that time to do that, staff meetings. And as we think about next year, we're already starting to think about how can we build upon that and really make that more streamlined for our year-long data review process with the teachers. With that in mind, that we're going to have to really prioritize that ELA curriculum next year and our professional developments, really unpacking it, just like we did with Envisions a few years ago, and making sure our teachers have that timing, that collaboration time with the coaches, to be confident implementing it in the classroom.
You're doing right.
All right. Let's keep going.
Keep going.
One area we've already started to do that work is, now that we've had our Envisions in place for almost two years now, is beginning some math vertical alignment. And I put up on the screen here, Jenny and her math team has completed this, want to give them full credit for it. Our sixth grade has had conversations with seventh grade around what is the most critical pieces that they need to see in previous learning as they come and tackle these key concepts. So for ratios, rates, and percentages, which is 26 days, a large chunk of the year, as you'll see on the right, there are standards that cover third, fourth, and fifth grade that lead to students understanding the standards of ratios, rates, and percentages. Really, this is a place we've wanted to get to, and we're excited about getting here, because now we know that in third grade, where the progression is for those students and that those skills are really important around simplifying fractions, equivalent fractions, and so on, which we cover. But having that increased knowledge ties back to that teacher collective efficacy, that if we're all doing our part, the kids are going to learn more. And so we're now just moving in, sixth to fifth grade is up next, and we're going to just keep going all the way down to pre-K until we've got a complete K-12, actually, vertical alignment of those key standards, of benchmark standards.
I think long-term, there's an impact on rigor, because we know everybody's holding themselves accountable to their grade level standards. So we won't have people saying, "I can't teach my current unit because they're not proficient in." We'll have intervention around that and data meetings to figure out why kids are coming not proficient in, whatever it is. So this is a great process.
And then, of course, that also ties back to how we're reporting it to families. And I spoke about the report cards the last time I was here, but it also, there are a lot of standards, of course, but these are the ones that are really the most critical that the teams, our math team, has decided need to be shared with our families to really help families understand the progress their child is making. And so you see all the domains on the left-hand side. We've done the same thing for ELA, and then those most critical vertical standards for learning as the kids progress from one grade to the next. So very excited about all that work and having the time built in for teams to do that.
And Steve's done a great job leading that work that was in progress when I started and who really had taken ownership of that project in terms of revision of the report card. So thank you for doing such a great job on that.
No problem, no problem. Kind of the last piece that John Hattie and Doug Fisher talked about was that content and the student, and that this can be more complex. It's really about the teaching strategies that we put in place for students. And to really understand that, it's asking the question, how engaged do we want our students to be? At the very beginning in that video, Hattie talked about the thinking out loud and the kids being a part of that learning and really investing in it. So as we think about engagement, you know, participating, which is in the middle part of this graphic here, are the students that are doing the work, they're paying attention, they're responding to questions, kind of just doing what they need to do? Yes, they're engaged, but we want kids to be driving their learning. We want kids to be investing in their learning, asking questions, getting feedback, self-assessing, because that is really where they're going to see that metacognitive piece really come into place and see the importance of their learning. And so as we design our PD and we design our implementation of the science of reading, this type of engagement level is going to be really critical, in that we spend time building that into our work as a next step.
And I'll say, in visiting classrooms, I see a lot of students who are engaging at the investing and driving level, but I think the piece about building efficacy across the district is getting teachers talking to each other about those moves that they're making and why they're impactful, so that they are building it together, so that we're all driving each other's best practices. Lots of great foundational skills to work, to build on here.
Yep. Hattie calls it the Goldilocks challenge, the just-right challenge for every student, and that's where the differentiation come in, comes in. What is the, getting to a place where we understand each child and what they need, no matter where they are in their progress, makes, making sure they have just what they need to be able to achieve. And that's where you see a lot of RTI, a lot of your accommodations, modifications come into play. And I think we do a wonderful job with that here in Grafton.
And I think simplified, that's the biggest shift, is just-right challenges to mean bringing the reader level to the reader, and now we understand it's bringing the learner up to the grade level standards in terms of content and skills. So again, the efficacy piece is how do we do that? How do we teach each other and support each other in doing that collectively? And the rigor piece is getting every kid's at that level of grade level context and beyond.
And I just wanted to throw one more piece of Hattie's work up there, because I think we do a really good job with this, but speaks to the engagement.
And we're groupies.
And we're groupies, yes. But one of the other highest impacts on learning is the cognitive complexity and task that we're asking kids to do. And I think we all know that as adults as well, when there's a challenging puzzle, we tend to be really much more invested in it, but we make more connections that way and push ourselves in our thinking. And this will be a huge shift again in the ELA programming that we've seen, both with Witten Wisdom and EL. They really drive kids into much more deeper cognitive complexities and tasks that are, I've seen in those classrooms really make a difference. I was in grade level meeting today, grade level leader meeting, we had a wonderful conversation around how these shifts are going to really build our own repertoire, but also we're going to see pretty big shifts in our kids' ability to learn.
And I feel like at the elementary level, we're seeing that in math, because they're in year two of Envisions, so year one, new curriculum's always like itchy little socks. You kind of have to get comfortable and get used to them, but I think teachers are feeling the impact at this point of having that curriculum resource.
And another part of that, that complexity, that kind of next step, we did receive the grant for Project Lead the Way. So we are now officially heading in that direction. Couldn't be more excited about it. It's been about a year in the making, and we're, can't wait to bring it into our innovation zones at the elementary level, which have been redesigned, as you know, and we're going to be kicking off on the 24th with the convening, getting together so that we really can start unpacking. I put up here on the screen, though, in year one, we chose, let me back up, in year one, we chose a computer science approach. You had different options, which kind of had a different through line from kindergarten through sixth grade. Sixth grade doesn't appear on here, because they will be doing some of the more advanced fifth grade that we worked with Project Lead the Way team on. But our computer science theme focuses on both some of the core science standards, like, for example, light and sound in grade one, our properties of matter in grade two, but also still touches on some of the computer science, such as programming and, you know, computer systems as you go through. So there's a connection between all of these standards. In year one, Project Leads Away expectation is that every student in every grade level is getting exposure to one of these modules, and then year two, we add another module. We keep building out from there. They do a wonderful job of training teachers ahead of time. In fact, we had such a good interview with them that we connected with them, they were asking to potentially host a training here in Grafton at one of our buildings. They really thought we, I'm not being biased, but they really felt like our team was really invested, so they reached out to us to set that up for, as an area training. So we're happy to work with them if we can make that happen. But I think it's going to be a wonderful shift in the complexity of what we're doing in the innovation zone. Our innovation zone teachers are very excited about it and implementing it next year, and then we'll build out, you know, from there.
Yep. Talking about having t-shirts made for the grant convening, because we're pretty, like, we feel like bringing some Grafton swag.
Yeah. And this is something Jen has more worked on, I want to give her credit for this, but really kind of looking at where we are in not only this school year, next school year, but in the years beyond in terms of our curriculum, and what phase of implementation or development that we're going to see with that. So as you can see up here, this year has been heavily focused on prioritizing the ELA K6 programming. We've been implementing SCL, as I spoke to, still refining and aligning Math K5, because it is year two. Similar for SCL, second step in K1. Mathematics in grade six, I do want to point out, is different than Envisions. Envision stops at grade five, but our sixth grade team next year will be implementing along with the middle and the high school that programming. So there's some nice vertical transition there from our sixth grade into the middle school. And then as it goes down, there's some pieces that we still have to really dive into, social studies being one of them, which will come up further down the line. We have to really make sure that that ELA program is our priority as we implement that next school year. But Jen, anything else you want to add there?
Oh, I think I've talked about that bad boy.
All right. So you've seen that before.
Thank you.
But I think that's part of our collective vision, that really, when we think about that professional development, teacher collective efficacy, really kind of understanding the roadmap is critical to, you know, bringing that to light. We also recently did a professional development survey, and it really, these are actual quotes from the survey, from our elementary teachers as to what they want to see next year. It's only a sample, but there was definitely some themes that were very clear in there, and I've already hit on a number of them, that we, we've really kind of moved in that direction. I think we're seeing the benefit of it. But vertical curriculum alignment, based around prepping, collaborating, the reading program, time dedicated to the reading curriculum, becoming more familiar with the curriculum in order to align practices, to meet the needs of all learners. Somebody even commented, "Making Visible Learning Book." I hear there's a new book. I was very happy to see that.
Was that you?
That was not me. New ELA curriculum, science of reading, and our STAR ELA data that we implemented last year, we can really focus on the most important needs of our students. And then that, again, science of reading, collaboration time, that new ELA curriculum approach worked, and this individual even commented that how we designed it for Envisions, it really worked well in terms of aligning practices across buildings, across grade levels, and building teacher clarity, which, again, one of the key impacts on learning that Hattie talks about is that teacher clarity piece. So it was really good to see that, where we're building and designing processes in place to really kind of continue forward. We still have work to do for sure, but we're heading in the right direction. And that's really, I think, what it's all about, is developing that path and, it's not, it's more a cycle than a path, because as you get down the path, you do have to cycle back to make sure that the curriculum's working and look at that data. But it's identifying those skills, giving that teacher's time to collaborate, build that efficacy and clarity, that instructional practice, and then, you know, the results are, of course, hoping to see that progress in the students.
I think one additional piece is, we are participating in a program through DESI. We're part of a cohort looking at science standards and shifting instructional practices in science. So we spent this afternoon working on that piece, and you could see that in the grid in terms of what we'll be looking at and how we'll be implementing that. But a lot of shifts happening, but all shifting in the right direction, and a lot of good things happening with kids in Grafton.
Yeah, and the science shifts are really good. So the MCAS is, have we talked about that before?
A little bit, but the performance-based tasks and assessments.
Our kids will be doing it for the first year this year, performance-based MCAS one day in science, where they're going to be given some materials, they'll also be on the computer, given a task, but it's going to walk them through a simulation with different results, and they can kind of like manipulate that to be able to get to a certain result. It definitely resembles more of that design process, so I think it's a good shift. But yeah, we, the DESI training today was looking at how we can bring that shift even further into the classrooms to get them ready for that type of assessment, which is why next year also that needs to be something that's prioritized and planned for, without a doubt. Questions, thoughts?
That's great. Really helpful. It's exciting to hear about the science of reading piece, and I'm sure we'll have questions about that. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question about collaboration time. I know, obviously, we have some half-days and you're doing the recess stuff, but like, how much time are our teachers actually getting to communicate or collaborate as grade level or across grade levels?
Yep. It's never enough time, I can say that.
Yep, 100%.
You know, we have some staff meeting time, although in the staff meeting time, sometimes there are required trainings we have to do and such. We do have the five half-day professional development days. Teachers also have hours in the contract after school that they meet together. And then I know that in most buildings, if not all, we try to prioritize common planning time. I know, for example, at North Street, for our grade levels, at least once a week, there's common planning time, and it takes a lot of creative scheduling to get to that. But that's a time teachers can use, you know, if they choose to come together and share and plan, and I know they do in most, I think, pretty much everywhere across the district. But, you know, I think also looking at those after-school times as how can we maximize those hours is going to be a piece that we're, you know, looking at in the future as well.
I think it's, you know, there's that expression, if you're casual with your I think it's, you know, there's that expression, if you're casual with your time, you become a casualty of it. So I think it's about, for us, prioritizing. Harvard Business has their Three Big Rocks theory. So we feel like, just really making sure we identify what those three are, and we all agree, these other things are important, but not right now, not for this year, this time. So I feel like we're protective of the work that we're doing and really focus on that. We'll see progress and change.
I had a question about standards, I'm hearing myself echoing. On the report cards, you have a set of standards by grade level and you assess them. And it's obviously not the entire set of state standards for a grade level, because that would make the report card much too long. At what point do those get reevaluated? Are you happy with the ones that we've chosen? And the same for the SCL standards, because that was pretty new this year. Can you talk a little bit about that process and how often it'll happen?
I was just in a recess meeting yesterday at your school, and we were talking about this. So teachers were talking about, with adoption of a new resource, looking at the scope and sequence of the resource to see if it aligns with ours. You know, typically, we say we create the curriculum and the resource supports it. If there's misalignment, we always want to know why, why was that decision or choice made? And does that impact how we're collecting data and reporting on student progress? So I feel like a report card, you want it to be a pretty finalized document, knowing it has to, it's a tool, and it has to suit its purpose and intent. So we have to be open to revision if we need it. The standards, it's tricky, standard-based reporting, because the standards are end-of-year standards. And some of them, we address that content, maybe a science standard, and you might not spiral back to it again. So it can be challenging for teachers to determine how to report out on progress. So I was talking with a teacher about a student who maybe hadn't showed proficiency in identifying the stages of a water cycle. So then we looked at curriculum to see where cycles return, so life cycle, weather cycle, like other places where we can take that big picture content or skill, reinforce it, revisit it, how we do that. But definitely, I think it's a dynamic document. Definitely, we're living in it this year. Teachers are anxious to revise the progress reports so that they align with report cards, but we said we really want to make sure that we're pretty tight with the report card before we do that next stage of work.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add, so in the next few months, we'll be sending a survey out as well, asking the teachers how was, you know, all the way from the standards, but also how the ease of use of the report card, conversations you had with families after the, you know, we've done it twice, so after both report cards, making tweaks to finalize any changes. I think it should, to some extent, be a living document, you know, we don't want to change the whole thing every year. But tweaking a standard here or there is, I think, important as we see a need for it. But then, in the next few months, also adjusting that progress report, which is a much shorter document, but we want to see the through line from the October progress report that all elementary school students get, and then the report card they get in December. So that, there's a connection there.
I think there's always a little bit of a chicken and an egg, chicken and egg thing going on. So as we continue that vertical alignment work in the math standards, we'll again do that in science and social days in ELA as I progress here. But that may drive revision as well, because they'll be making those decisions around, wow, this is really an anchor standard for third grade. So we have to make sure this is adequately reported on, that kind of thing.
Great, thank you.
Good question.
I wanted to say, I'm really glad that you're focusing and really trying to improve sixth grade math and just the vision for that, because I do think it leads to a lot of your performance in middle school and high school. So just really rooting back and making sure that there's good teacher understanding is super valuable.
Absolutely right.
Anything surprising that's sort of come out of this transition to Science of Reading? Either with the students or the staff, or, I don't know, anything unanticipated?
Anecdotal, like we have a teacher saying, a reading specialist who was a teacher, and she said, "I've been doing it wrong, I've been hurting kids," and, you know. We have to reassure people, like, no harm has been done to children. But we work in a research-based profession, so we're always going to be changing what we do and how we do it. And there's a teacher who has looped with her students from last year to this year. And she has said, "Without this shift, I wouldn't have known what my students were capable of." And is feeling really impressed with what her students are producing and what they're learning and how they're sharing the learning.
I was, well, I got a lot of things running through my head right now. But one of the things that the DESI curate site says is to, you know, be weary of the writing that's in the programming, but I actually was surprised to see how thoughtful and creative the writing is. And I've seen a huge shift in the kids' writing ability in the classrooms that I've been piloting. So I expect to see more of that. But I also was surprised with the depth of knowledge. One of the things that Science of Reading and really both Witten Wisdom and EL do is, it doesn't just scratch the surface on a topic, it really goes very deep into the topic. So I was in a fifth grade classroom covering one day. They were reading a novel, but at the same time, learning about the Ness Peiers. And the kids, I was like, so where are we, like, where does this take place? And they were like, well, let me come over to the map and show you. And they pointed out, like, we're in Idaho over here, and they're trying to cross this river. So there was geography connections, there's historical connections. And another example, I was in that same classroom where the teacher looped and the module was around the circulatory system. And the teacher at first was like, oh, this might kind of gross the kids out. But they were very enthralled in learning about the heart. Like, they could not stop talking to me about the chambers, like, it's like the powerhouse of your body, like, and here's how the vessel. And they really wanted to go learn more on their own about these topics, which I think goes back to that engagement piece. Like, they're asking the questions, they're finding the answers, and they're in charge of the learning. And another teacher, I'll just end on this one, but one of the biggest shifts the teacher said was that it's giving up me kind of talking a lot and letting the kids think and talk aloud, which is exactly what Patty's talking about in the opening video. Gotta let kids do that, right? And that's really where that learning happens, so, all right, I'll stop.
I was just gonna add, the students that I was talking to, there's one group in particular, and they said, I said, "What do you think about," they were using Witten Wisdom. And they said, "Well, just easier, you know." And I said, "What do you mean?" Because they're all reading complex texts, they're not reading leveled readers anymore because of the shift. And they said, "Well, you know, like, now we know all about the Dust Bowl, so we get what's happening in the story." And I was like, "Ah, out of the mouth of Abe's, all right." They critiqued some of the instructional moves, which the teachers had the same critique. They didn't like that it was repetitive, they did a lot of the same instructional strategy called notice and wonder. So they thought, man, they don't miss a beat. And they, teachers and students, felt like they were doing a significant amount of writing. So we feel like that was all positive. And the vocabulary use was off the charts, especially in that part unit.
What a great move.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else?
I have a comment, which is somewhat irrelevant, but I really loved the visual of the grasshopper hopping around in his head to like, because it's, I've thought about why I could never be a math teacher. And it's like, because the way I understand math is the way I understand math. And being able to teach it to someone who doesn't see it the same way is so hard. And, you know, like, having that, you know, I just thought that was beautiful. Like, let's talk about how I got to that answer, how I even got to that strategy. And that was, I really liked that.
Encouraging when the student gets it wrong, especially in math. Like, I, as a teacher, when I was teaching, I loved when kids got it wrong, because I'd say, "Let's really, show me, like, what did you do?" and to talk about it. And a lot of times, their thinking is good, it's sound, it's just they've made a computational error or, you know. But then they help each other get to the right answer. And a lot of times in math, there's multiple ways to solve a problem. So being able to share and talk about how you saw it versus I saw it is huge.
And I've seen that, I've been in a third grade class, a seventh grade class, a 10th grade class, where the teacher has said, "How else could you have solved that?" And the students are sharing out problem-solving strategies, which are going to transfer to all kinds of challenges and new situations, so.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you both, this was fantastic. We love the news. Come on down.
Nicely done, that's a tough act to follow.
Just left. Happy to introduce Rachel Murray.
Hi.
Rachel is media clerk extraordinary there at North Grafton Elementary School. This year, Rachel is serving as one of our new co-directors for summer enrichment. Her fellow co-director is Ryan Mercier, and he's an ELA teacher at the high school. They're off to a wonderful start, couldn't be happier to have both of them. Rachel's gonna kind of give you an update on where we stand.
All right, thank you, Jay. And thank you for letting us come tonight. We're excited to give you guys an update. So let's talk about the transition. Ryan Mercier, and Ryan is an English teacher at the high school. Lisa gave us the handoff in January, Lisa Rice. And she, of course, had a very detailed and wonderful timeline that helped our transition go smoothly. There are so many layers and levels to this program, but just being able to spend some time with her and be able to have the timeline that she has so carefully created with this program was fabulous. And then she has continued to allow us to have communication with her and consult with her on issues that have come up. We've also had a lot of assistance from Central Office, which has been wonderful. Jay, Mandy, Kathleen, Neil, Shayna in Operations, Marita at Central Office. So many people that have been extremely helpful to help this transition go smoothly. Our goals for this summer, really, our main goal is just to ensure wonderful programming and to continue on with what Lisa has built. And so to continue on with the programming that's been offered in the past and also to continue with the same satisfaction that the parents have been used to in the past. Our long-term goals, we would like to expand our offerings and increase our student attendance and the number of people that we're servicing, while still being able to maintain our parent and student satisfaction. We would like to open this program up to outside districts, if we can accommodate that. And also, just working in the long term on creating a more streamlined technology process for the enrollment and payment procedures. That's a huge piece of it. So for this summer, we will hope to offer about 15 classes per session. And that might not initially sound like very many, but there are five weeks of classes being offered. Each week has a morning and an afternoon. So there will potentially be 15 in the morning, 15 in the afternoon for each week. And we have about 33 total staff that will be working at this time, which also includes a couple of people from Worcester and Millbury, as well as many teachers and pairs from Grafton. And currently, we have about 250 students registered for classes. And we continue to work on marketing to get the word out. And on average, each student signs up for about three classes throughout the summer. So that's exciting, too, when we have repeat customers. We've tried to offer something for everybody in our programming this summer with kindergarten camps, lots of art and science exploration, crafts and literature, bookmaking, dance, cooking, baking, tie-dye, Legos, art, nature, music, photography, Spanish study skills, weightlifting, cheerleading, puppet making, backyard games. There, we have programming for kindergarten through high school. And really, again, trying to focus on classes that appeal to everyone. What's new this year? We have attempted to try to automate our registration process. And this year, parents are signing up on a Google form. And they are automatically populated into the class. And an invoice is automatically generated as well. So that's new this year. But that being said, we are, our wheels are constantly turning about how we can make the registration and payment process more streamlined and more cost-effective for the town of Grafton and just how it can be a very quick and easy and painless process for parents to sign up for. Some additional details, again, the registration process and payments, how that works is really key, I think, to the success and also to a lot of the feedback to the program. So continuing to look ahead on how that can be more streamlined and cost-effective for the town. Marketing continues to be an ongoing push. And it's on the Grafton Public Schools webpage, as well as the different individual schools. It's on various Facebook and organization groups in town. And marketing will continue to go on until the programs run. Parent feedback so far has been positive. That's always a huge concern when you're in our business. And so we, and we welcome feedback. And, you know, it's critical to keep going forward and improving and making things better. Next steps for us, we'll have a big walkthrough in April to work with the facilities managers to really nail down exactly how and what needs to happen in order to ensure for a smooth program this summer. And next year, we already have a thick file of things going forward that we, you know, see where we could work on the program to continue to make it as best as it can, as best as it can be. And it's, it's an incredible program that really offers a great opportunity for our town in the summer with such a variety of classes. And also, for working parents, it's a great, a great opportunity for their kids to be in. It's really, it's like hidden learning, you know, we're with so many of these programs that we're offering. So with that, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Yes?
Hi, I had a question. So I know that some of the programs are open to high schoolers, but do you think that there's any community service opportunities?
Absolutely.
For high schoolers? Because I know Mr. Mercier, he runs NHS. So would you consider opening it up to like, maybe having some, like, NHS students assist?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. So are you part of NHS?
Yeah.
So great. So maybe I could communicate with each of you?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, and obviously, Ryan works closely with you, but that would be wonderful. Yeah, thank you, that's great. Yeah, so stay tuned, we'll talk about that.
All right, great, thank you.
You stole my question. That was one of mine, I love it.
So I believe last year, one of the changes that I'd heard about was that there was a day where parents could come with their kids and kind of, maybe that was just the real little ones, and go around and see where they were going to be in the buildings. They would know, because a lot of parents have never been to the high school, they have no idea.
Right.
Is that something that you're going to offer again? And are you going to invite those out-of-town folks? Because they probably don't have any idea either.
Right, right. I love that idea. And I wasn't aware that they had done that last year, but I love that idea, I think that's great.
I think it helped a lot of the parents of the younger kids, because high school is like, you walk in and it's enormous, and, you know, it's for much bigger students. But when they see how the rooms are set up for the preschoolers and the kindergartners, it's a little bit less intimidating.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
I had not a question, I have a comment. I have a fifth grader, so like, back when she was starting elementary school, I remember this amazingly gigantic packet came home about summer programming, and you had to like, fill it out and hand it in. And I can't even imagine the headache it must have been on the other end, going through all of that and trying to pair up students. And just watching it develop into this so much more succinct program is just... is just, it's amazing. It's really amazing. And I would also like to suggest a Dungeons and Dragons group.
Ooh. We take suggestions.
I would consider it. I would consider it.
But I love it.
I bet there's someone in NHS who could run it.
English teacher last year, he's very into that.
See? What age group would you envision that to include?
Well, to be fair, because this is completely, you know, biased to my own. My daughter's in fifth grade and they have a great Dungeons and Dragons group at the library, but you have to be thirteen. And she's not old enough, so younger than that.
So kind of the?
Yeah.
Tween.
Yeah, a nice tween group, exactly.
Right, great.
So I have some questions.
Okay.
So you said that there's about two-hundred-and-fifty registered so far. Do we have a goal? Or is there a maximum? Or are we gonna make it work?
Well, I'll tell you, last year, so last year versus this year, we did offer more classes this year. So that can be good and bad because there are, you know, only so many students in town that can fill the spots. I envision that we will have, I mean, my goal is that we would have at least three-hundred students this summer. So that's my, that's our goal, is that we'll have around three-hundred students this summer. Registration will continue to go on until the classes start.
And are we closing any of them? Are any of them limited in number?
Yes, we cap the classes at fifteen. And right now, I believe we have ten that are full. So, you know, we still have a lot of time for registration. Registration typically ends around the end of May, but it can continue and does continue to go on until the classes start.
And if a child from the district who has a para during the school year wants to do a program, how does that work? Do they get a para? Is there support for them?
Yes, absolutely. They will have. And there is a place in the registration form for them to indicate if they need a para. And I believe right now, we're at about fourteen that will need a para. So absolutely.
And you feel we'll be able to accommodate that and we'll have the staff or the ability to support?
In the past, that hasn't been a problem. People are very willing and eager to work for the summer enrichment program, as well as the extended school year program. So in the past, there hasn't been an issue with that. So I feel confident it'll be the same for this year as well.
And for parents tuning in, particularly working parents, if they want to do the two-half days, is there like a lunchtime? How does that work for a parent?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. So for parents that want the full-day option, we do offer a lunch where they can stay. There is a little bit of an additional cost for that, but it's a supervised lunch. And they just would come down with their morning class, have lunch, and then their afternoon teacher would take them back up to their room. So there's never a situation where... Yeah, they're on their own. And it was very popular in the previous years. And we have had a lot of the students so far that have signed up for the lunch option. So it is a great option. And the morning session runs from eight-fifteen to eleven-fifteen. Then there's a thirty-minute lunch. And then eleven-forty-five to two-forty-five is the afternoon program.
Awesome.
I have a question about the fees that you charge for the different ones. Are they based on, because some of them are different. Is that like materials fees?
The discrepancy in the fees is based on the supply fee.
Yep, that's what I figured. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We're so happy you're here. We're so happy you took it on. And thank you for coming to tell us about it.
You're welcome.
We love the growth.
Ryan and I are so excited about this. And it really is, it's a great program. And if people have questions or want more information on Grafton Public Schools, website is the, you can, you'll find the link for the brochure and more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Welcome back, old friend.
Geez, been a while. A minute or two, maybe?
There's a copy of that in here as well.
Yeah, hopefully it was disseminated.
Yeah, everything was. So it's great to have Arnold back. He's the, as many of you know, the former director of special education here in Grafton. Currently, he is doing fantastic work with the Southern Worcester Educational Collaborative, one of two collaboratives that Grafton participates in, along with Aspen Valley Collaborative. And tonight, Arnold is going to be speaking to the committee about the need for a capital fund to be created for SWAC.
Great, thank you.
Get away.
As Dr. Cummings mentioned, I am the executive director of Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative. We are one of twenty-four collaboratives in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we are what's called a private, separate day school for students primarily with special needs, although there are times that we take students with 504 plans or might need an alternative setting for a brief period of time. But really, ninety-nine percent of our students are with IEPs. So myself, I've been the executive director since July 2020. Yes, that's when the whole COVID thing started, believe it or not. But I was there a year prior in a different role as the director of special services. My finance director, Lena Travinsky, helped me sit down with some of the superintendents of our member districts. So we report to fifteen-member school districts, Grafton being one of them. And I'm here today to hopefully secure an affirmative vote from you to establish what's called a capital surplus fund. And the collaborative has been around for forty-nine years. And to date, this sort of thing has not been done in all its existence. And I learned about it this year doing some professional development of my own and taking some courses. And I realized quickly that our situation is not that different than other collaboratives. Although some collaboratives do own real property, we do not. We have two wonderful landlords. Our two properties that we rent, school space from are in Southbridge and in Dudley. They're about two miles apart, right off of Route 131. So we've been leasing from these two realty companies, very small, for better part of twenty years, I'd say. And I don't have any fear that our relationship is going sour. But after doing this sort of thing for a while, there could be the opportunity down the road, sooner than later, that they, as landlords, decide to retire, live their lives in the Caribbean or whatever they're going to do. And we're fortunate in that we do have a right of first refusal written into our lease. But I have no capital to even get a down payment. So I'm trying to be fiscally responsible. I want to have a bit of a parachute because I don't want us to be, let's say, displaced for one reason or another and not have a means to support ourselves. And it's not like we would go to the member districts and say, oh, my gosh, we need help. But what that would do would displace about one-hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-thirty students very quickly if we were to lose those properties. So our students are Grafton students. They're Millbury students. They are Webster students and so on and so forth. Each district sends a number of students to us. For one reason or another, they are not able to be in their home district. But what's interesting about the collaborative, when I applied for a position there, when it opened up, I realized that I was obviously a consumer of the collaborative, as Grafton's been a member. In the seven years that I was here in Grafton, the collaborative, Southern Worcester County Ed Collaborative, sent back four students who were doing successfully enough, showing data-wise, showing some ambition. Parents and guardians were on board. Receiving schools here in Grafton said, yeah, let's do this. And three of those four students were very, very successful. One graduated with honors. So what this collaborative did, and in all my years, whether it's in Grafton or my time when I worked in Framingham or in Ashland, in similar roles, I had not seen collaboratives, nor had I seen private special needs schools send students back to their home district at such a rate. It's kind of our, it's our vision is we know that there's going to be other kids in line wanting to come. And since we've come back from COVID, I'll tell you, our referral rate has gone nearly threefold compared to what our rates were prior to COVID. About two-and-a-half, two-point-six times. I've been doing some analysis of it, trust me, because they keep coming. So the other piece of having a capital reserve is to satisfy those needs because I've had to have some very uncomfortable conversations with superintendents, uncomfortable conversations with special education administrators saying, we don't have the space. Or we're already, we're already full on that grade level. The other piece of it, I'm sure you've heard about it all this year, the labor market's kind of lousy, the pipeline's kind of lousy. That's another topic for another time. Maybe I'll come by and talk to you about it if you'd like. But we want to be here. We want to expand. We would have the potential to expand, but I really don't have the capital to do it. So it's a bit of a parachute, a bit of a safety net, but it's also the idea of being fiscally responsible if we're able to grow and serve our member districts in a very fiscally responsible manner. So today, what I need to do with you is establish the rationale, which I think I've done so far. But then also, a limit on the balance of the reserve. And then I'll answer hopefully some questions that you have about this. We're looking for a $2 million limit. And the very first question that all the other school committees have asked me is, wait a minute, how much more is this going to cost us, the town? And the answer is zero, okay? It's whenever we run on an excess based on our budget, that's when we're able to say, and I would only be able to do this with an affirmative vote from the board, the superintendents with whom I meet on nearly a monthly basis, where we come to the end of the school year, end of the fiscal year, do we have a reserve? Again, going back to my finance director, Lena, yes, it looks like we do. What would the board like to set aside and start building that bank account, that savings account? So at no point does this provision by the regulations force school districts to fund it. When it comes time to spend monies, same thing. I would have to advise the board, hey, it's time to repair some of our vans. It's time to perhaps look at building a gymnasium. We don't currently have a gymnasium. I know it's kind of sad to hear, but that's our state of affairs. The other thing, I have a long-term goal. Since I've been at the collaborative, I would love to see, since we're small, about one-hundred-and-twenty, one-hundred-and-thirty students right now, I would love to see all our students under one roof. And the reason I say that is we provide services, CADA 22 for students, kindergarten to age twenty-two. And I've seen when we combine our students during extended school year programming, that meshing of the teachers and that meshing of ideas. And it gets rid of some of the silo work that ends up happening. And being able to provide that continuity, that vertical alignment, I know Mr. Wilshire was talking about vertical alignment. It's critical. It's critical because our elementary goes to grade six and then all of a sudden, grade seven. We have our middle and high school together. So I've got some longer-term goals, but it's also me looking at it saying, wait a minute, all I have is about four or five vans and that's all I got. And they're getting old. I don't have any, any sort of collateral. The other hamstringing issue for collaboratives, because we're not a public school entity, let's say I want to build a new high school. I can't go to the MSBA. We're not recognized as an LEA. So me going to a bank with zero collateral, hey, can I have a few million dollars to build a new building? They're going to look at me like, well, yeah, but with what collateral? So we need to be able to start this ball rolling. I want to get this in place. I feel like I'm, I want to be as good a steward for the collaborative as possible and make sure that if something untoward does happen to our current properties and our current situation, that it does not come down on the shoulders of the superintendents of our member districts. Should have gone through this. This is fairly repetitive. Hopefully you saw it prior to tonight. Again, I do want to bridge our fiscal responsibility to our students. And again, our students are your students. And here is the actual regulatory guidance. That form that I gave you also cites it as well. And what's interesting is I'm here today, not just on a whim, but I do need to get two-thirds of our fifteen-member districts to say, yes, please set this aside. So far, I'm at a hundred percent, just to let you know. No pressure. I do have submitted to you some basic capital plan details. It's really just some ideas, more than anything set in stone. But it, again, looks at being able to provide for our students. We do have an intensive special needs program, but currently, we don't own a wheelchair van. Wheelchair vans come in at about six figures. So again, we'd love to field any questions that you have about this. And I want to say thank you for letting me come by today and make sure that I'm doing my best to support the students of Grafton who attend, as well as the rest of the students who attend our collaborative.
I have a question. I bet you do. How did you come up with the limit?
Again, looking at, at one point, I do have some of our lease documents here. And at one point before my time, there was a question to the board, may have been before Dr. Cummings' time, but maybe not, talking about selling the property and looking at what those values were back then compared to now, what we might need for, to secure a down payment. Also, coming up with $2 million isn't going to come overnight.
For sure, for sure.
But I did want to have something, a lofty goal, a good goal. And looking at some of our surpluses. This year, for example, I talked to you about enrollments and how many referrals we're getting. We're actually above our stated quota right now and have been for some time. So we're, unlike a municipality where you get an allowance every year from the town, the more we produce, the more income we have. And we have the ability to actually, I hate to sound this way, but make money. So I want to be able to say, what are we doing that? The problem that I didn't talk to you about before is outside of a capital reserve fund, we're only allowed to keep in the bank twenty-five percent of our expenditures for each year. We're at that already. We're sitting on that. That really, that is truly for a rainy day fund. And again, before my time was used at one point to help out with salaries when enrollments were way down for the collaborative. This was about fifteen or so years ago.
So what happens to funds above that twenty-five percent if you have that kind of reserve? Like where does it, where does it go? What happens to it?
Great question. We're doing it this year, a little bit. Some credits, some refunds were given to each of the member school districts. And based on how many students you send, you get a proportion of that amount that the board of directors says we want to release back. So we did that this year. We also have an OPEB account, which is a retirement account that needs to be funded. We're not there yet. Again, Lena is going to do a dance when she hits the one-million mark. She's getting close to that. So each year, for example, I think last year was a hundred thousand dollars were put into that. And that secures retirement for individuals who have moved on from the collaborative. And again, doesn't come on the shoulders of the member districts.
I had a question.
Great.
Under renovations, I saw green space. Do you guys not have any green space now? Or did you just want to add more?
We have a little bit. What was nice was at the elementary school, the Auburn Elks did a wonderful job this past summer with the building principal. And they put together a playset for our students. Again, keep in mind, we're real small. Our elementary school has about forty students in it right now. So that gives you an idea of the scope, all right? But before that, we did, and we fenced it in as well. We do have some green space up at our Dudley campus, which houses our middle and high school. But, you know, we'd like to be able to beautify that a little bit. We'd like to make it more attractive. We do, in the summer, teach mountain biking on some small trails that we've cut out in the back. But being able to fund that and really make it look nice would be, would be great.
Yeah, I totally agree that. We have, we're so privileged here, we have like a beautiful amount of green space at the high school specifically. And it, it does definitely improve the atmosphere of just for the students, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, there are no additional questions, I'll take a motion.
Sure, yes.
I move the committee approve and accept the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative capital plan approval and sign.
Second, motion made in seconded, is there any additional discussion? All right, hearing none, take a vote.
Hundred percent.
Thank you very much, keeping the streak alive.
Thanks so much, Arnold.
Thank you. If it's okay, if I might, I don't know if you have a moment to just sign that and then I can pick that up.
She's already working on it.
He's doing it.
And, and Dr. Cummings, if you want, I can scan that and send it to you for your records if you'd like.
Great.
Thanks, Arnold.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Arnold.
Thank you very much.
Great to see you, thank you. Fabulous, all right. We want to, I'm gonna flip things around maybe so you guys can give your reports in case you gotta go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see what the first one is. Um, we do have a, a good amount for, um, Lili. Um, to start off, our, um, student council's mental health month for March ended with us handing out small pop-up fidget toys. Um, and then we had multiple clubs run booths at lunch, including peer leaders and the social justice coalition.
And then we had a lock, oh, sorry. Oh, we had a lockdown drill on Tuesday last week and we were supposed to have training, but the delay, I don't know what happened to that, but, um, it's like good to keep awareness with that sort of thing. And I think the presentation was really good at, um, addressing a lot of the issues and preparing us for if we, God forbid, had a lockdown drill.
Um, and then we had three very fun and successful musical performances this weekend. It was Bye Bye Birdie. Um, I went and saw it, I'm not sure if you did, but I thought they did a very good job pulling it off. Mrs. Austin was there with the fifty-fifty raffles, getting the job done.
Um, so there's the twenty twenty-six fundraiser last Friday, that was the one with the parents. Um, and that was successful, my mom went to that, she had great things to say.
And then today is our class of twenty twenty-five fundraiser at Cancun's. Um, the restaurant is doing, we're doing a partnership with them and they're donating, um, I think it was twenty percent of the proceeds to our class, so very thankful for that.
Uh, and then yesterday, all the practices were postponed due to a solar eclipse, um, which I'm sure you're all aware of.
And then our guidance has set up a college, uh, college fair trip scheduled for early May. Um, it's taking ninety students to Boston by bus. Um, and a lot of colleges are presenting in the area and, um, you know, you can sign up.
There's permission slips.
Yeah, there's permission slips.
Need to be turned in.
Um, and then we have, uh, prom tables coming up, so people need to submit, um, their prom table requests.
Um, and later this month or early May, um, Grafton Student Council will be hosting a movie night for the elementary schools. I know there's one with the PTO, but I think there might be an additional one for younger or older. Um, so that will be soon.
And then, um, NIASC is coming April eleventh to evaluate the schools. So, um, there's already been some talk about that. Um, but there's gonna be people, uh, coming and evaluating and stuff. Um, I believe we talked about NIAS in prior, yeah, definitely.
Um, and then, I don't have this one written down, but a few weeks ago, um, at the beginning of March, our student council attended the High Hannes Conference, um, which I don't think I've updated since then. But we had, um, twenty-two people go, um, and it was very beneficial. I ran for office personally. And then it inspired, we have another, um, uh, member of our council running for regional office again. So that, that'll shift and that conference is this Thursday, so, yeah.
And then April break is next week, as we all know. Um, so just, um, yeah, just a heads up on people who didn't realize that. And then AP exams are also approaching in, um, early May. So now's a good time to start, um, thinking about that a little bit.
Be good.
Do you have any questions for us at all?
What's a prom table?
Oh, so, um, for prom, um, there's tables that people get, um, for the, yeah.
Got it, okay.
So just, you just have to like fill out a form and say, who's gonna, yeah, exactly. And then everyone has to sign off to make sure that those people want to sit there.
I think Mrs. Finney is definitely helping out a lot with, um, of course, yeah. Um, but for anyone who hasn't been in the prom loop, it's at the AAC Hotel Marriott. I think we went, we went over this before. Um, but yeah, and it's a sit-in, um, fancy dinner and, you know, they're, they're doing a great job putting it together.
Beautiful hotel, their food is really good.
Oh, good to know. Very glad to hear.
Great, anyone have any questions? That was great, really comprehensive, thank you both. Um, welcome to stay, but also of course, welcome to go home, get some work done.
Going to Cancun's actually for the fundraiser.
Perfect, go to Cancun's and then study for your APs.
I got Cancun's before I came and I didn't have time to eat it, so it's waiting for me.
Oh, hold Cancun class. Thank you both. All right, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Uh, they, they covered quite a few things. Um, NIASC is, uh, visiting on Thursday. Um, it's the culmination of two years of work. Um, our committee, our staff have done a fantastic job. So they, they visit on Thursday, I'll be interviewed, a whole bunch of staff will be interviewed. And they'll, out of that and the work that's gone on in the past two years, they'll put together a report, give it to us, show us areas that we do really well in, some that we need to work on, what have you, it makes us better. And then we have a year and then go into the process again. It just, it never really ends. I wanted, uh, as you know, last week we had a water main break at the high school. I wanted to just publicly thank maintenance, custodial, AA transportation, they are awesome. Water district staff came over and gave us some great insights. They came over immediately before we can even get a, an actual plumber. And they, they were terrific, custodians if I didn't mention them. So anyhow, it all, for a challenging situation, it worked out as well as it basically could have. So thanks to everybody who helped out with that. Uh, this afternoon into this evening, Mandy Lape, uh, she's not here because she represented Grafton Public Schools at a local job fair over at Milford High School. I went over there for about ten minutes, but she was doing a stand-up job. They, it was pretty early. It, it just started, but they, they had a, a good number of people. Right now, we're still talking about positions in, in terms of, uh, very general terms because we're, we're not sure who's coming, going, et cetera. But, um, I like that we're doing it and she did a really nice job. She put together some, some materials that were top-notch. And I think everything else they covered.
Awesome. Questions, comments? And I assume we're not gonna do a human resources report because Mandy will have one after this event.
Correct, she will have one. I, I did ask her, there wasn't anything pressing that needed to be reported on.
So we're on to, um, future agenda planning. Approaching the end of this agenda.
Wasn't there, on last time's agenda, weren't we gonna talk about the enrollment predictions and that move?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. That was NASDAQ and we were waiting on the finalized report.
Okay.
But I didn't, so we're, that's still in place.
Got it.
Um, the piece that, there was a, we had to, myself and Mandy had to do some work for NASDAQ, but probably their most important work is actually done with downstairs. And they were waiting on, not a long time, but they were waiting on a form from, uh, the planning department around, uh, some, some form about, uh, not just development going, you know, you might drive by and see half of the development stuff more in the pipeline. Uh, they hadn't received that, they did receive it last week. So now they're gonna revise the report, give it to us, and once it's finalized, I'll present it.
Got it, thank you.
Should be soon.
Great.
I was gonna suggest that would fit perfectly at the next meeting.
Yeah, and it might, that's my, that's my hope, I just don't, I just don't know yet.
And the other thing, and maybe I'm not seeing it, after last meeting, I feel like Kevin Carney was gonna come back to talk about the, um, the credit.
I believe that's gonna be in the handbook.
Yes.
Oh, it's gonna be in the handbook.
I can break that out, but it is May seventh.
Okay, all right, I thought it was there, okay, so it's as part of the handbook conversation, okay.
It's nice to see the athletics report on there too.
Good.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep, my pleasure. And I, I added the twenty-eighth, is that the correct date?
Yep.
Okay, great.
The eleventh also says reorganization, so you can probably strike that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. Can I ask a question about the food services report?
Of course.
That's just a report, right? We're not, this isn't a contract here because we just did that.
Correct, yeah.
Anything else anybody sees missing or questions about? Okay. And I understand we do not have minutes to approve.
Correct, I, I actually have, this morning received the, the minutes from the last meeting. I need to add a couple of last names, which I'll do. And it was just, the window was too tight.
Yeah.
So you'll have them for the next meeting.
All right, so we have a couple of warrants, I believe.
Correct, two.
Yes, Amy.
Um, I move the committee accept warrant number thirty-eight R nine dated March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Second, motion made in seconded, any, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor? Okay, great, passed unanimously.
I move the committee accept warrant number forty dated April fourth, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of seven hundred ninety thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second, motion made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor? And we do not have any policy discussion for tonight, so I will take a vote.
It's not really a member report, but MCASs are happening.
What?
MCAS is happening.
All the buildings, yeah.
Oh.
Everybody's busy.
So everybody knows, so, we know, we know.
Yeah, if you have a kid, you know.
You know, exactly, it's happening.
Uh, everybody's talked about Bye Bye Birdie, it was amazing, um, so, yeah.
I'm biased, but I agree.
I didn't get to go, and I'm heartbroken.
Yeah, they did a really nice job, it's exciting.
Yeah, it's a great production. Yeah. We're in the homestretch, people, I feel like.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I know we have a month of, uh, after break comes pretty fast, that we have a month of concerts. Um, the high school band and chorus will go to Disney where they will perform and have a workshop. And then the seniors will graduate.
Graduate.
And the parking lot will be empty.
Yeah.
And after that, it's, uh, two or three weeks to go.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice and early, good, yeah.
Shh, don't say that out loud.
Okay, it is June and nine, or April ninth, I think we're saying.
No. Do not, do not put your shovels and snowblowers away, Grafton.
Sorry.
I made that mistake once.
I apologize if I bring some sort of plague upon us. Um, that's it, we don't have correspondence and don't need executive sessions. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Motion made in seconded, all those in favor? Good night, Grafton, thank you.